Good evening and welcome to the August 18th, 2022 regular public board meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'll ask our Board Secretary, Ms. Martha Q., to call the roll.
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Dr. King? Dr. Larson? Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
And Dr. Larson is home with illness and Dr. King is traveling. Can we have the mission and goals?
The mission of the School District of the Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe and nurturing. Excellence in education is a shared responsibility and partnership with all district and community members. Whole child development is vital to our educational system. Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical, and career and social-emotional learning. Our decision-making process is student-centered and student voice is valued.
And the 2020-2025 district goals are: Social emotional wellness. Produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish. Repetitive pre-citizens. Modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society. Diversity and inclusion. Establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops social-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. Next I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the August 4th, 2022 regular public board meeting.
Feinberg, move.
Crispin, second.
Moved in second. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motions are approved. We're not yet fortunate enough to have our students back in session for the student report. We'll look forward to that resuming soon. Dr. Rucci, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Wedeman. This was an exciting week for us as we once again started to hear the sound of student voices throughout the buildings. Our middle school was an extremely busy place today with students and their families visiting, in-service taking place over there for our bus drivers. It was nice to hear the sound of our musicians and musical instruments being moved around in the high school, as well as the sounds of our student athletes who all returned this week. We spent a lot of time this week as an administrative team meeting and finalizing plans for opening days and opening faculty meetings and communication home to families. And we're equally as excited next week to welcome new teachers who will be joining the staff here in our district. The following week, all of our staff members returning, and then finally, all of our student body returning. None of this happens, though, without a tremendous amount of work and a heavy lift that is undertaken by departments like technology, all of our custodians, our maintenance workers, our grounds crew, the office staff here at Oakmont End in all of our schools, and the transportation department as well. Many of these folks are behind the scenes, people who are doing a tremendous amount of work in order to have things ready over the next three weeks. And we express our profound appreciation for all that they are doing throughout these days and the hurried pace at which they will be working over the next few weeks to get everything finalized. I also want to make a few remarks about the Health and Safety Plan that is on the agenda for this evening. I want to highlight Ms. Battistelli's presentation. At the last meeting, there are just a few revisions or modifications, if you will, that have been made to that plan that is attached to our board agenda. If we go right to the very first change that I'll draw your attention to appears as item E, I'm sorry, item two on what would be page four of the document. And in that second paragraph, the wording was changed to read, "The district will operate in all programs in an all-person format, except for students opting into Haverford Online, the district's virtual program." So we wanted to make sure that that was noted in there as well. The next change that you will see appears in Section A, which refers to masks. And again, it's the last sentence within that section, "The district will provide masks to those who wish to use them." The third addition or modification that was made since Ms. Battistelli shared this information earlier this month refers to physical distancing, and the wording states, "Unless mandated, there will be no requirements for physical distancing during the 22-23 school year." And the final modification that was made to that document is in Section E for contact tracing. And in there, it reads that a student, staff member, someone who tests positive for COVID or a probable case, that they would notify either their direct supervisor or the school nurse. That was a change which previously had read the building principal. It's our nurses that people have been communicating with. And then the sentence was added, "The district will provide information on the most recent recommendations from our local health authority regarding isolation and quarantine." They're the only changes that have been made to that document since the August 4th meeting.
And that item is on the agenda to be voted on tonight, so the board will have an opportunity to discuss it at the time of that vote, right?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Public Comment. We have one person who has signed up. The Board values public comment as an essential component of school governance that adds information for the deliberation of the important and complex matters that come before the Board. It is an opportunity for members of the community to address the Board. It is not a question-and-answer period. While we conduct our business in open public meetings according to the Sunshine Act, it is not a meeting with the public. Our public comment is divided into two sections. This first section is for comments pertaining to items on tonight's agenda. The agenda is published on our School District website in the School Board section under Board Docs. There is a later time for public comment on other school-related matters. Residents of the township may in advance of the meeting sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. In order to give everyone an equal opportunity to speak, and per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the Board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming your residency in Haverford Township. If you have any materials to distribute, please give them to Ms. Q. at the end of the table. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the meeting minutes. And the speaker for this section of public comment is Steve Westhoff.
Hello, Board members. My name is Steve Westhoff. I'm a resident of the township. I'm also the father of two Cooper Town Elementary School students. I am here to talk about the Health and Safety Policy, but I wanted to point out that in addition to the goals mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, two years ago, this board adopted a resolution that says, "Our students," in part, "our students, no matter their race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, language ability, disability, and other identities deserve to feel and be safe, seen and affirmed." I wanted to thank this board for following up with that commitment with the policies, staff, training, and resources to realize and maintain these principles. Due to my children's conditions, especially my sons', they missed a lot of school last year. And the Haverford Online Program is not a substitute for in-person schooling. They did, my son did go to summer school. My daughter was able to also go to physical therapy. Linwood is a beautiful campus. From the bus drivers to the staff, to the teachers, the nurses, the aides, everyone was absolutely excellent. And I wanted to thank everyone for that summer school experience. They're looking forward to school this fall. The Health and Safety Policy is important to my family and to others. My observations on reading this, I apologize, I didn't look at the August 4th agenda or the meeting yet. I will follow up. But my review, there will be no masking or social distancing unless it's required by someone else, whether that be the Health Department or an individual's plan. Luckily, we are in the latter. There will be probably no tracing or tracking of cases, probably no testing. That's my read. Moves most responsibilities to the immunization and communicable disease policy. I was unable to find this policy ahead of the meeting. I'm very interested in how that is written, implemented, and enforced. Anybody who tests positive for COVID-19 must stay home. Again, that only works if folks are testing. I think that's getting less and less common. Will symptoms be checked? Will people be notified if there's illness going around, even if it's not COVID-related? Maybe it's not diagnosis COVID, but it's a respiratory issue. The district says it's going to provide masks. Please ensure that those are high-quality masks and that they fit different body, head shapes and sizes. That's children's mask, my son, who needs it probably more than anyone else in my family. Not many masks fit his face. He's always getting the nose down, and that really makes it very ineffective. You will, it notes that the district will maintain facilities. I think HVAC and ventilators, ventilation systems are very important. I think that could very much help. As for outdoor lunch and activity time, if there's a possibility, especially when the weather is good, to give students an option to be outside, that would be excellent. I saw something about the vaccine clinic, and if there is an opportunity for boosting or other vaccinations down the road, I think what the district did was excellent and to encourage people to continue to take advantage of the public health measures that we have. I really appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next item of the agenda is our Board Committee Reports, and the first one is our Policy Committee with Ms. Snodgrass.
Thanks. The Policy Committee met this past Monday, August 15th, 2022. We had a pretty ambitious agenda, and I'm happy to say that we got through the great majority of it. So I'll just run through the policies that we discussed, several of which will come before the Board next week. Not all of them, but we gave specific instructions on a couple revisions, so we're hopeful to get a couple revised policies in front of the Board for our next September meeting. Just like all of our meetings, the committee meeting is also available to view on the school's YouTube. So first, we discussed Policy 006.1, which we are discussing about having a policy specifically for holding remote board meetings. Then we discussed revisions to the Administrative Regulations of International Exchange Student Policies. Next, we grappled with a couple of the very outdated policies in our Communications section. I thought Council did a good job of taking the committee's previous criticisms of those very old policies and creating a new Section 901 on general community communications. After that, we discussed Policy 912, Research Involving District Students and Staff. This also had an Administrative Regulation that we discussed along with it. We discussed relations with non-school organizations, groups, and individuals. That'd be Policy 913, and it's accompanying Administrative Regulation. We also discussed potentially proposed Policy 627, which would be District Initiated Real Estate Tax Assessment Appeals. We discussed this in detail, but due to litigation, not with the district, but litigation going up to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, we are waiting for further guidance, and that one will be postponed for several months. So more to come on that. After that, we discussed Policy 914, which is relations with our intermediate unit. We went on to Policy 916, a proposed policy on volunteers, or revised policy on volunteers, and its Administrative Regulation. And then we finished with Policy 918, Proposed Title I Parental Involvement. So like I said, it was quite an ambitious policy meeting. It went the, you know, we allotted ourselves about two hours to get through as many policies as possible in our ongoing audit process, where the committee is going through all of our current policies and any policies, you know, gaps that we see, proposed policies for those. So this is just part of the audit as ongoing, and I think we're making good progress. Again, it's available for view, and when we actually bring the policies to the Board for our first reading, we can go over them in more detail.
Thank you. And then we have a report on our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting from Dave Schwartz.
All right, thank you. Yes, we had a, we had Finance and Facilities Committee meeting on August 11th. I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. Went through, first of all, the school construction updates. So Linwood is almost done. The new railing was installed. There's some final approvals that still have to go through that should be done very, very soon. High School Phase 1 budget is now closed. That what was remaining in the contingency was moved to Phase 2, which is the construction of the remaining classrooms. So there's still some punch list items that'll be done mostly during off-hours. Some paving was installed. I believe JR mentioned the week of 29th will be final inspections. There are still some things outstanding just due to supply chain issues. The partition in the weight room still is not in yet. It should be in October. Shouldn't affect class schedules or anything of that nature. HVAC is still happening. The boiler will be coming in September. We are not receiving some doors. Again, due to supply chain issues, we're going to reuse some existing ones. Green roof trays, display cases, some of those things are also not in yet, but they should be in pretty soon. For right now, the building is ready for classes. Final inspections will be the week of 22nd, and the furniture will be coming in the week of the 29th. So down to the wire, but it sounds like everything will be put into place. Moving on to Chatham and Cooper Town, there are a couple of change orders you'll see this evening for Chatham. In some cases, there were some just some misses on some of the coil units and so forth for, that comes for some of those change orders. In other cases, we were planning on using some duct work that, when you actually got down to it, found out that had to be replaced. So a couple of those minor things. The air emissions for Chatham Cooper Town are still relatively low, still well within industry standards, but you'll see some change orders for those items. Let's see here. Other than that, though, things seem to be on schedule and looking good for Chatham and Cooper Town. The next, a couple of other items that were discussed were summer project updates. There's a lot going on this summer. And one thing I just will point out that JR brought up, and I think the Board would echo, is that the maintenance staff and janitorial staff did a great job this summer. We had a lot going on. We are doing follow-up construction on four schools: Linwood, Chatham, Cooper Town, and the high school. And for all of those buildings, they have to be cleaned and made ready for students to come in in September. And people have done a, you know, janitorial staff, maintenance staff have done a great job. So thanks, so big thanks for further efforts. You probably have seen, if you've been around, various new sidewalks, new resurfacing of lots, those kinds of things have gone in. The maintenance transportation lot is mostly done. Couple things they're still waiting on. Again, supply chain issues, light poles, panels. Some of those things, the propane tanks are in. They won't be operational just yet, but they will be, once LNI comes through and inspects them, they will be, it will be operational. One thing that did happen recently this summer at the middle school, the chillers are working, but there was an issue with one of the cooling towers. There are two cooling towers on middle school. One of them is still operational. The other one's something called the VFD, the variable, I forget, the Variable Frequency Drive is what it's called. What broke on one of them. These are drives that basically control the air conditioning so that it can be changed based on occupancy, based on time of day, and so forth. It's a way to save energy and save some money. One of them broke. The other one is still operational, but they both are the same age. So the recommendation is replace both of those that you'll see on the agenda this evening for, I believe, $70,000. We have presentation also on food services. It still has some staff shortages. The staff did receive some, some stipends from the Board earlier this year. They are very appreciative for that. Had some issues, again, obviously, with our, with the supply chain and everything. So there were some, it didn't impact purchases, it impacted inventory, that kind of thing. And there is still some need for part-time staff for food services. Looking ahead a little bit, there'll be some changes to the à la carte menu. Some items are going up, some are going down. The general idea is prices are going down when students are buying things that are a bit healthier. So that's going to, that's trying to encourage some of their health. There's also a very big presentation. I won't go through everything, but just looking ahead a little bit for this year, they are implementing some new things. They're going to classrooms. They're having meetings with students, taste testing with some students. So trying to get better overall food services from Chartwells. We also are re-upping, we're recommending re-upping a contract with our existing auditor for the next three years. We've had them for the past, for the past three years. BBD. Came to us with a proposal that we're asking for approval for. And finally, we had a discussion on the solar panels. And we, basically, I guess I'll try to sum it up. We are having a facilities, we're having a facilities feasibility assessment that is ongoing right now by Crabtree. We are asking Crabtree to accelerate their analysis of renewables and solar for all buildings in the district. They'll be coming to the next facilities meeting on September 8th with that information. And at that point, the Board will then make a decision as to whether to pursue solar and what way to pursue it, more than likely with an RFP process. And that'll be coming up in the very, very near future. There is, there is a very strong, there does seem to be strong support from the committee and from the Board in general for renewables and solar. It's moving. We are just making sure that we are dotting the i's and crossing all of the t's. So more to come on that. And with that, if you would like more information on any of the food service items, the changes to the menu, the school constructions, those are all on facilities, Board meetings, and Board Docs.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and by the way, also, JR's not here, but wherever he is, thank you for the new sidewalk at Chatham.
All right, thank you. Couple of busy committee meetings. We are now in Section 6 of the Agenda, Finance and Facilities. Item A is the bill list. I will welcome a motion to approve dispersments from the following funds as listed.
Snodgrass moved.
Schwartz, second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? All approved? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is to ratify the bill list. I accept a motion to ratify the August 5th, 2022 prior year related dispersments from the General Fund in the amount of $560,709.95.
McKay moved.
Someone moved.
Crispin moved.
McKay second.
McKay second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is change orders. I will accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect KCBA and Associates, Inc., and owner's representative CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders totaling $78,464.76 as listed.
Feinberg, move.
Schwartz, second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion?
Real quick, these are the change orders that I mentioned for Chatham and for Linwood. Climate control and the fencing, or I'm sorry, and new sports netting.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is a tax assessment appeal resolution. I will accept a motion to authorize special counsel for tax assessment appeals to resolve the following assessment appeal pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County under the following terms.
Vitale moved.
Crispin second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item E is a food services à la carte price changes. I will accept a motion to approve increases to select à la carte items and the adult meal prices per the attached list.
Schwartz moved.
McKay second.
Moved in a fight for second. Any discussion?
Is this a good time to mention that we're moving back to the National School Lunch Program? And as LP, I was brought up in the Finance and Facilities meeting as part of that, we were on the, don't ask me the acronym, I don't remember, but it was, you know, the summer lunch, summer lunch for everyone all year. And we're not on that one anymore. We're going back to the pre-COVID way of the National School Lunch Program. And so anybody that was previously on that prior to COVID needs to sign up again.
Complete paperwork.
Yeah, complete the paperwork and all of that. And everybody should have received emails and things like that. But I think worth mentioning one more time because school's coming up, and that came up in relation to this at the committee meeting. So just mentioning it.
Thank you for bringing that up. I should have mentioned that before.
Don't know.
In my part. The application process has started, though, for those who want free and reduced lunches.
Is there a deadline for that, or can folks sign up for that all year? All year?
Fill out all year.
Okay. Obviously, it's better to do it earlier. But yeah, okay, just making sure there's not like a deadline we need to announce. On this, I saw, when there's not a current price, does that mean it's a new item?
Yes.
I think that's it.
Okay. These look great.
And just a reminder to the community that there's instructions on how to apply on the website. So if you, there's a nice detailed, even a PDF that shows you, this is where you click this button. Like, there's a lot of information on the website.
And just to note that the move or switch from the kind of more universal meal program back to this one was a federal decision. This wasn't something that we were able to opt in or out of.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of advocacy across the state and the country to continue the more universal feeding program, but the feds did not do that. I will mention that the wording of this is to approve increases, and as Mr. Schwartz noted, that the charge list, the price list actually includes some decreases too, but it's the increases, I guess, that we're most focused on. So anyone...
So, um, anyone have any other comments or discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item F, B B D LLC, local audit renewal. I will accept a motion to approve the agreement between the school district of Haverford Township and B B D LLC to perform annual local audits for the years twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Feinberg move.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, just, I will note that they have been a good partner in, um, helping to explain and help us understand the financials, and I know have worked well with our business department, so, um.
And, and the increase, and the increases per year are very, are very minimal. Five hundred dollars per year, I think, is more than, more than reasonable.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item G is the middle school tower repairs. I will accept a motion to approve the agreement between the school district of Haverford Township and Johnson Controls to replace two variable frequency drivers and a cooling tower motor per the attached proposals at a cost not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars.
Chris moved.
Schwartz second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one quick note, these are, these are prices based on Co-Stars. So it's not a, so it's, you know, it's, it's already set.
A state negotiated.
Exactly.
School district price. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item H is the I D E A pass-through monies agreement. I will accept a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three I D E A pass-through monies agreements with the D C I U totaling one million, two hundred thirty thousand, eighty-one dollars.
Chris moved.
Feinberg second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. In section seven of our agenda, human resources, item A is retirement and resignation. I will accept a motion to accept the following retirement and resignations as listed.
Chris move.
McKay second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is appointments. I will accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act one sixty-eight of twenty fourteen.
Schwartz moved.
Chris second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, I was glad to see some bus drivers and got the stints on here, which is a good time to plug another thing that came up at the finance and facilities meeting, which is we still need bus drivers and we still need food service workers. Um, so if you know anyone who's interested in any of those positions, please have them apply. But I was glad to see some bus drivers on here, among many other positions, but.
A lot of substitute teachers there as well, which, which was a very, very big.
Right, is.
Yeah.
Deal.
A nice, long list.
Yeah. It was good, it was good to see that.
Bigger than the, the, the retirement and resignations, that's always a good time.
We're going in the right direction. Um, and, um, it is a common topic in the news about the challenges of hiring, um, teachers or teacher shortages. And I think this speaks to both the reputation and the outreach and recruitment that our district is doing and the ability to attract this talent and, and staff our schools. So, um, thanks to everyone involved in that.
Our building principals, our department directors, and H R have certainly been very
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved, and, and we have an introduction to make here tonight, Mr. Dunnege. We have a new assistant principal at the high school.
Thank you, everyone. We have a new assistant principal tonight. Uh, with me is Heather Panero. She'll be our new assistant principal. She comes to us from, uh, North Dallas, Texas. Uh, all indications are she's not a Cowboys fan. I didn't know if I could ask that in the interview process, uh, but we hinted at it and she didn't bring it up, so. Uh, but she comes with the wealth of experience. Originally, she's from South Jersey too, uh, so she's been in a couple of different places, uh, so brings some nice experience, uh, outside our general area, you know, to the district, um, and we're ve- very excited to have her. I had a call text us, uh, three weeks ago, or about two weeks ago, uh, to get references on her, and they were, it was their first day of school. So, you know, whatever, we're thinking in our heads now. Uh, it was their first day of school, and, and I called and the secretary kind of was like, hey, it's their first day of school. Like, what, you know, what's wrong with you? But, uh, uh, but they called me back, both, uh, her supervisor and her former principal called at, uh, eight o'clock at night, their time. Um, and they were just going on and on, uh, about her, uh, positive attributes and qualities and experience. Uh, and I, all I could think of in my head was, they have a funny accent, and I'm glad I don't have a funny accent.
Right.
No, but they were going on and on, and, uh, it was incredible. Uh, I just thought to myself, I hope someday two people speak about me or any of us like that. So, uh, it was really cool, uh, and we're very glad to have her. And we're going to, she's going to start on the twenty-ninth. Uh, she's starting to meet the team, and, uh, she's very excited to meet the students.
That's great, welcome.
Thanks, so, welcome Heather. We all look forward to meeting with you, and Jen will give you our Haverford goodie bag.
All right, I'm flipping past all these good hires to get to item C on the agenda is a leave of absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave request.
Feinberg move.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. In section eight of the agenda for people's services, item A is an E S Y, extended school year, contract approval. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational contracts for students attending out-of-district E S Y placements for the summer of twenty twenty-two.
Chris move.
Schwartz second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is out-of-district educational contracts. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational contracts for students attending out-of-district placement for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Chris move.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and somebody seconded.
Good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item C is educational services agreements. I will accept a motion that the board of school directors approve the educational service agreement for a student in the district with special needs. The agreement covers reimbursement for educational services for the school years as listed.
Feinberg move.
Chris second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item D is to rescind an educational services agreement. I will welcome a motion that the school board, the board of school directors, um, rescinds the board's approval at the August fourth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of an educational services agreement for student eight dash five, eight oh nine two in the amount of forty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty dollars.
Snodgrass moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. In section nine of the agenda, curriculum and instruction, item A is student educational excursions. I will accept a motion to approve the following student educational excursions as listed below.
Schwartz move.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Good luck. Yeah.
Yeah, good luck to the cheer and cross-country teams. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item eleven in the agenda, other items, item A is the A R P S R, E S S E R, Health and Safety Plan. I will accept a motion to approve the revised A R P E S S E R Health and Safety Plan, which was updated per the board and health department guidance and discussed at the August fourth, twenty twenty-two board meeting.
Feinberg move.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, I just wanted to say that I know, um, that a lot of this now falls on just making sure that families monitor. Um, and so just want to again have a plug for, please test if you're ill, please stay home if you're ill. You know, the, that, the responsibility is on us as a community to help protect those families and students who are particularly sensitive and at risk. Um, I know that for lots of us, COVID nineteen now is a not difficult illness, but for many still in the community, it can be a life-threatening illness. So that's my only thing with this, is it does put a lot more responsibility on parents and families to track their kids and make sure that they're not coming to school, um, with a, a disease that can still be life-threatening for some people.
And to track the community conditions before you go out into our schools and, and the community in general, understand, um, the prevalence and, and the risks and, and take the precautions that you choose to, whether that's masking or distancing. I, I did have a couple of suggestions for the health and safety plan. I, I think these are comments that are consistent with, um, some of the board's prior conversation and just providing clarity around, um, pointing to the, um, not just, you know, the requirements, but the recommendations, um, of, uh, the health departments and, and other health, uh, guidance that we have. I propose these as additions, um, that the board considers, um, and kind of builds into the plan, um, before it is, uh, approved. One would be in item A, which pertains to wearing masking. Um, it talks about supporting individuals who prefer to wear masks, and, um, I would just like to see it added that, um, we also support people who are masking to comply with guidance regarding exposure to COVID and after exhibiting symptoms of and testing positive for COVID, just to, um, kind of more fully describe the situations in which, um, masks are recommended. Um, and item F, um, is where the instruction is for those who test positive must stay home is the language in the current plan, and I think that would be clarified by adding something like, um, staying home, um, and as recommended to do, and are recommended to do so for the length of time outlined in the guidance from the CDC or state or local health departments or the school nurse. I'm suggesting those as additions and welcome any other discussion.
And, and you recommend those additions to be made at a later time? Are we, are we still going to approve this, this evening?
Um, I believe we can, um, discuss those to be incorporated and then approve the plan subject to additions that the board recommends.
So what we can do is approve it as is, repost it with those changes that are on there to give the public an opportu- an opportunity.
Okay.
For a comment on that, and then we, we can approve it again.
Okay. Um, and this would be a plan, there is, um, a requirement from the state that it gets approved and, and submitted by a certain deadline, but, um, it is probably like prior year, something that we will be evaluating, monitoring, assessing.
We're required to look at it at least every six months.
Okay, so, um, in, you know, with that in mind, I can reserve those comments for the, the next edit or another, another chance. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, uh, then the motion is to approve the plan as it was posted, um, in the agenda. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. We are now at item twelve on our agenda, which is the second public comment period. Um, we have four people who have signed up. Again, um, please state your name, confirm your residency, and you will have three minutes to address the board. Uh, the first person is Courtney Kelly.
Good evening, I'm Courtney Kelly. I am a Haverford Township president. I have two kids at the middle school. I saw Mr. Han in the audience, so before I forget, I do want to thank you for all those Friday night sessions that you hold for the families. Admittedly, I probably stopped going after like the first month, but I definitely read the presentations, and I'm super grateful for the communication that you send out every week to the family, so we're kind of up to speed as to what's going on. So thank you for doing that. Um, I just wanted to, um, extend thanks and gratitude to the district and the board for some of the efforts that you're taking, um, in the last few months regarding school safety and security. Um, I've been listening to the board meetings, um, that have occurred and understand there's, uh, some movement underway, um, with respect to advocacy under, uh, some P S B A, uh, provisions that they're looking to do, um, and that seems to be on hold until at least September. It sounds like there's a committee meeting and then in November when there's a vote. So, um, I want to thank you for, for taking that on. Um, I also want to thank you for the centralized, uh, safety and security page on the district website now. Um, I really appreciate that as a place for parents and families now to go, um, to read up on safety and security that's going on in the schools. Um, I am, I ha- I'm happy to hear about the, uh, additional budgetary, um, provisions that have been put in place for mental health resources, and also understand that there's another, um, opportunity for additional funding, um, that the school district is pursuing, um, with a deadline, I think, at the end of this month for both on mental health wellness, emotional wellness, and also, um, school safety. So I just want to thank you for that. Um, at the June second meeting, um, some of the board members, uh, towards the end, were making comments towards, um, working on a resolution, um, particularly in the vein of gun safety, and I'm here to, um, continue to advocate for that. Um, I am in favor of whatever you're going to do to produce, um, something that will make a commitment to the community, um, that, uh, we are trying to achieve gun safety and common sense gun, um, discussions. Uh, so I just want to remind you of that. Um, and I feel like there was something else, but I forgot it, so I'll be back next time. But I do want to thank you for your time. Um, I hope you have a wonderful rest of your summer, and, uh, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bernadette Lawson, and I'm a resident of Haverford Township. At the August fourth school board meeting, the board approved a twenty-one thousand dollar contract for dignity consulting. Just prior to that, Ms. Vitale questioned the cost and later voted no for this expense. I want to publicly thank her for this evening. She merely questioned the expense of a program that is being funded with taxpayer dollars. Interestingly, not one board member rebutted Ms. Vitale with a specific justification of the cost of the contract. I do not work in the field of education, so perhaps twenty-one thousand dollars is a typical expense for professional training, but no board member provided that explanation. Instead, Ms. Vitale was countered by Dr. King, who stated that there's, quote, "No price tag to put on a sense of belonging. If just one child is uncomfortable, then we are doing a disservice," end quote. For the last two weeks, I have reflected on that comment repeatedly, no price tag. I am not dismissing outright the goal of inclusion within the district. What I am concerned about is the implication of that statement, that there is no cap on what the district will pay for this daunting goal of ensuring every student's sense of comfort. Dr. King went on to state that she was excited, quote, "That we have the resources to be able to move forward and truly live up to the mission and goals that we have set forth," end quote. If that is the prevailing sentiment of the board, then I'd like to shine some light on an academic area that needs resources, the district's world languages program specifically at the eighth and ninth grade levels. Learning a second language is at the very core of our district's mission to educate and to inspire well-rounded global citizens. Unfortunately, each of my three sons' experiences in either their eighth or ninth grade world language classes fell short. In the interest of time tonight, I've provided the board with copies of emails that were sent to district administrators, as well as a summary of my son's experiences, which ranged from not having a ninth grade Italian teacher for weeks at a time, or to my other ni- son's ninth grade French class, for which no honors section was available. This past school year, my youngest son had Spanish class, and on two occasions, he told his teacher that he felt the class was moving too slowly. The last conversation I had with Dan Haran, he acknowledged that the issue was that eighth grade language classes are not leveled. I later learned that my son was one of the lucky students. There were eighth grade students who did not have an actual Spanish teacher at all I later learned that my son was one of the lucky students. There were eighth grade students who did not have an actual Spanish teacher at all for weeks. Hearing that, I just assumed it was a budget issue, that there was no money for a leveled world language sections in middle school. And shame on me, I let it go. And my son remained unchallenged and uninspired for the remainder of the year in Spanish. So my question tonight is, what is more important? A student not feeling included or a student not being academically challenged? At the very least, I would hope that the district's position is that both are important. So following Dr. King's line of reasoning, if one student is academically unchallenged, then the district is doing a disservice and there is no price tag to be placed on corrective measures. So in closing, I ask that the district grant more resources to the academic area of world languages. By doing so, the district could hire additional staff, actually measure tangible results, while also achieving the district goal of educating and inspiring global citizens. Thank you to the board for your time and attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Helene Conroy Smith.
Hello, my name is Helene Conroy Smith. I'm a Haverford resident. At the August 4th school board meeting, Dr. King stated that she and Dr. Crispin start off the meeting discussing the sense of belonging, inclusive spaces and equitable opportunities. As I dive into the PA and US Constitution, none of those ideals that was discussed are even present in there. There is a price tag, that is to be told, and that price tag is held on the backs of the taxpayers. So as you're discussing finances for ideology, you're placing it on the backs of the taxpayers. So if there's plenty of money to be had, then I have grave concerns as a taxpayer, because what's equitable may not be equitable for all. We're looking at our elderly population in this town and some of them can't afford to remain in this town because they can't afford their school board taxes. So I'm asking you, when we talk about that, we as taxpayers have a right to ask you about, what are you paying for? What are we paying for? What is the metric Haverford is using to meet an idealistic, utopian ideal that every child will feel included? Because we're talking about feelings, we're not talking about outcomes. And that's a big difference. And they're children. And some children at times don't feel that they're included. Doesn't make it so. So for the dignity consultant to have Noah Apple come in for $20,900, you also had a contract with Sage Wellness for $18,995. You had a responsive classroom contract for $859. We got off cheap on that one. We have a $15,000 bill for D V C E E and we've had that since 2009. When will that end? How are we going to continue on paying for all this? And also DCIU is also a member of D V C E E. They pay into that as well. We paid $23,200 and $608 to the P A Association of School Administrators. We paid $17,000 to P A School Board. We paid $4,400 to the trustees of University of Penn, which are also part of D V C E E. We paid Unchanted Learning $59,000. We paid DCIU for restorative practices over the summer, $3,200. And we paid another $2,000 for MNET. So we're almost looking at $100,000 to make kids feel included and feel welcome and to have safe spaces. What are we spending for reading? What are we spending for math? What are we spending for writing? And then to hear about the language program. And then also to hear that the music program for the fourth and fifth graders orchestra and chorus program is no longer occurring. Where is our money going?
Thank you.
The final speaker is Krista Millot.
My name is Krista Millot and I am a Haverford resident. I have two children. One is middle school age and one is high school age. Thank you tonight. I want to say thank you for your service. And so as always, I want to thank you so much for the time and effort that you've put into this year. I also want to thank you for supporting Basis and for your support of the inclusive policies for our kids in the district. It makes a huge difference and my children talk about the importance of feeling included. And these programs are vital and important for our children to feel included, means that they academically are going to improve as well and be able to contribute. Most recently, thank you so much for your vote to hire Dignity Consulting to conduct D E I training in staff with administrators. In addition, I've heard that there's more funding from the school district to receive social and emotional learning and to address the mental health of students. And I look forward to hearing more about how these funds will be utilized. Particularly because of the stressors of the pandemic, we see a lot of issues around mental health issues and so I'm really excited to see that this is being addressed. Finally, I want to urge the board to consider bringing back the parent guardian equity group as an important initiative that was put on hold last year. This is an important way to include our families and all voices in the continued development of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ruchi, I think in the public comment tonight, we heard several questions or inquiries that the administrators in your office may be able to reach out and to provide some additional information.
Certainly.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is board reports. I'll start with Mr. Schwartz.
Walking in today, I saw a sign up on the door, students, welcome back, September 6th. So we're in the homestretch. Good news for some of us. Not as welcome news, I suppose, to some of us who are a bit younger, but good, good to see students are, are going to be back soon. Enjoy the homestretch. I have a net report.
Other than the, attending the finance and facilities meeting and the policy committee, I did want to reiterate, we have very robust discussions at these meetings. They're sometimes quite long, especially the policy committee. You know, but for anybody that's interested in, you know, a deeper dive into some of those discussions, they are, as you know, my board colleagues have mentioned, they are recorded, they're on our YouTube page. So definitely check those out for people that are interested. But related to the finance and facilities discussion, I just wanted to thank J R and all of his staff again. Just thinking back, you know, Dave kind of went over in his board report, some of the things that have happened in the district over the summer related to finance and facilities and the custodial staff and like, it was, that was a heavy lift. That was a lot of work and also just the skill of, of the, that group of people, of that group of employees, like they're just the, the things that they can do, the skills that they have, you know, we don't have to go out and hire contractors to do a lot of things. We are able to do them in-house because the skill of our employees. So that's just, it's fantastic. So thanks to him and I hope that everybody, sorry I couldn't make it to the barbecue today. I was in Zoom meetings all day, but for everybody that was able to attend the barbecue, I hope it was, it was a wonderful day. It sounded like a wonderful day. So I'm glad we were able to do that and thank everybody for the hard work that they put in over the summer, because as Dave said, the summer's almost over. Yeah, we got our email, our welcome back email from Linwood yesterday, so it's really happening. But anyway, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. So anyway, thanks.
So to just follow up on that as well, I said this at the finance and facility meeting, but I want to thank all of our staff or not just all the heavy lifting that they did and their immense skill, but they did it during an incredibly intensely hot summer. And just so grateful for all the work they did. So much of it was outside during really hot times of the summer. Also, just as a parent, I'm receiving the emails of course lists and I just want to give a shout out to all of our administrators who are working so hard right now and teachers and staff to get the summer going. So thank you to all of you for getting us ready for a quickly approaching school year and to our HR department for keep bringing us people to hire because we have slots to fill. So thank you.
No report.
Just want to echo what my colleague said. Thanks to everybody. Being at the middle school today was really fun. I've been a very excited sixth grader. So we really do appreciate all of the efforts that go in to preparing for our students to return. So thanks.
Mr. Feinberg?
I just want to acknowledge our board president, who quietly continues to regularly take significant steps to learn more about the role that she's volunteered to, to be in and to carry that load, whether it's through various trainings through PSBA or weekly or monthly Zoom meetings with peers throughout the state. And I know that she's also been involved in some efforts to work with all the other board presidents in the county. So Bridget, thanks for everything that you do.
Thank you. And I have some reports from some of those meetings that I went to. On August 9th was the PSBA leadership. That's school presidents, vice presidents and liaisons from across the state and the focus was on communication. One of the things that was a nice takeaway was nationwide, there's data showing that an increasing amount of public school families say they are satisfied with public education. They gave some suggestions on ways, suggestions on ways to improve communication and I know that developing a communication strategy is, is one of the goals that the district will be focused on this year. So some of those, you know, would, would fit in nicely. Some examples are conveying the why, really lifting up our values and mission, which I think our district is doing in very visible ways as you go into the different buildings now and seeing our strategic goals there. Utilizing video to tell stories and we've got a crew who videos, different events and meetings to help share that information and broadcast information. And then another topic of conversation was preparing for crisis communication when events arise that warrant that kind of focused messaging. On the 16th was the PSBA all school directors meeting and this one looked at the state budget and changes to the school code that were passed and went through the different school board policies that would be impacted by that. Topics included a new requirements around agreements with higher education for dual enrollment, changes to the food program, school safety and security and threat assessment. Also some discussion about ways in which districts are looking to apply for those additional funds that are available and, and to use those for mental health, social, emotional wellness and safety. I also have a high school student who was like, she said it was the week of the 15th, right? 15th is my preliminary schedule here yet, every day. So I was able to forward that to her like the minute it came in. Getting excited for that and, and as Dr. Ruchi said, it's such a fun time of year when the students return for band camp and, and the preseason sports and getting all the activities kicked off. And today I was able to attend the Oakmont summer barbecue for our, the staff who've been working hard all this summer. It was a great chance to show our appreciation for folks who've been working hard all summer to get the district ready to start for September 6th, the first day of school. It was a beautiful day to have the cookout and games and, and music and I saw, I had to leave, but there was some dancing that was starting to break out. It was fun. And one of the things that I'm sure the staff enjoys is the chance to win some raffle tickets, including a day where Dr. Ruchi will substitute in for someone and I'm sure she's always like, who did it, who got it, who got it? So yeah, sometime this year, Dr. Ruchi will do the night shift custodial duty at one of our elementary schools. So yeah, a lot of, a lot of fun to participate in that and just echoing everyone's, enjoy the last couple of weeks of summer and get ready. We're going to have a start of a good school year. The next item on the agenda is the report on executive session. The board met an executive session with counsel to discuss pending assessment, appeal, litigation matters. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on September 1st, 2022 at 7:30 PM in the boardroom at the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, our business is concluded and I'll welcome a motion to adjourn.
Snodgrass moved.
Crispin second.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. Oh, that's okay. Yeah, yeah. I think we can, yeah.